Okay, sorry, now it's working. Hold on one second.
My name is Jane Hall and I live at 1265 West, 5175 South. And I want to preface my comments by saying I am thrilled that the owners of the land want to develop homes instead of another commercial property. So preface that in, I want to preface my remarks by saying that. But I am very concerned. We attended the planning meeting a week ago and I am concerned about the size of the lots that they want to develop. The Coleman Field lots are backed up to my home and we are zoned at an R-110. And we fought really hard to get those lots, wanted them to be R-110 as well, but the city chose to zone those as R-18. And I am concerned that you would think about zoning the homes up above on Ritter to R-16. They're very small. Someone asked the owner of the land at the Planning Commission, what size home could be built on that property? And he said last week about 3,000 square feet. Well, our own home is not that big. But we realized that, so we went home and looked at what the lot, the size homes that were built on the Coleman Farms properties. And they range from 1,800 feet to 2,600 feet. So I am concerned about that. I did speak with Mr. Eggit during the week and he indicated that they would like to possibly look to having an entrance onto 1,500 West from the property. I can't even imagine that that could happen because it's built on such a hillside that, and so the amount of traffic that 35 to 40 homes would bring in on that Ritter Drive, I think is really, really scary. But I do want to make sure that my understand, that I, that you understand that we are for the development of homes on that property. But we would like to see it developed as an R-18, the same as Coleman Farms. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
There's no more public comment that's in the room and I don't have anything on YouTube and no emails.
Okay, any texts, Rich?
I have not received any texts, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we'll close the public comment period. Moving on to presentations and reports. First of all, the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things. One, since our strategic planning meeting, Mr. Koby has received an invitation to serve on the Utah Local Government Trust Advisory Committee. And I know he's accepted that position. We'd just like to congratulate him on that. That's a good thing. We belong to the trust, as do many other cities and towns and districts. There's a lot of different government entities belong to that trust. But congratulations on that bill. I think that'll help us having you there. I just had Chief Shali. I'll just ask you a couple of questions. I know you, I got a note from you today that you were at a south house fire, South Weaver. Did you have anything on that you wanted to share?
I just had a kitchen fire that tried to get up into the attic and our crews actually made the attack on it firsthand. So, no, it was pretty quick, about an hour.
Good, oh, that's good. Glad that went well. Also, you mentioned it to begin, beginning of the work session, you talked about the heavy rescue vehicle being rear-ended while responding to an accident on I-15. Do you have anything else you want to share? I know that truck had to go to Salt Lake for some inspections. Is there anything on that or is that something to share, but this time with the council?
That night, we didn't, we looked at the frame and there was a slight bend in the far back of the frame, but nothing too concerning. The following day, we got underneath it with a little bit heavier duty light and really looked into it. And what had happened is the body had sheared off the frame. The whole passenger side rear to the axle had moved about an inch and a half. So somewhere inside the body, it's, it's kinked. We just got to figure out where and if we can pull the body back over top of the frame. So there, they said they'll have more information for me tomorrow, but at this point, I have a lot more. One thing that you need to mention too is the crews were, we sent two guys down, one to take the heavy and one to follow so we could bring them back in the brush truck. On the way back, they were hit by a box truck in the brush truck, forced into a guard rail. Then the guy tried to leave the scene and they were able to track him down. So that's two accidents in 16 hours roughly. And so the brush trucks got about $3,800 in damage to it.
That's too bad, that's not good. And that heavy rescue, that's actually a responsibility of the county now, right?
Uh, yeah, it will be. This one we own. It was handed over to us and we've got the title to it and insured on it. So we'll see what happens with this one. But the next one coming up will be owned by the county.
Okay. Super good. Any questions on that for the chief? Okay, thank you, chief. Going to move on next, our city administration report. Mr. Koby, do you have anything for the council?
Everything that I would say is already in the report. I just wanted to highlight one thing. We have, as far as employee recognition goes, we have three employees in the police department that are, have milestones this year. Officers Pippin, Boots, and McNally with 17, 15, and three years each. And we want to commend them for their efforts and their time here with the city and I thank them for all of their sacrifices and service. We work with an amazing crew here at the city and we are blessed every day and really every night by these dedicated and professional individuals who, who help us stay safe, who help track the bad guys down and who are really just blessing our lives in so many ways. And I'm, I'm grateful for the association. I'm grateful for the chance to serve with them. And, you know, Chief Brinkman, Chief Shali, we work with really, all the department heads are just fantastic. But in particular, I just wanted to point out, Chief Shali and Chief Brinkman, who just, they're, they're, they're the reason why we can sleep at night. And their, their sacrifices will never be fully known, but I'm grateful for it. And that's, that's it for me today.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions for Mr. Koby on the city administrators' report? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to presentation number three. This is the presentation of the 75th City Anniversary Plans. Rich Taylor, our Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I also have invited a member of our U.C. Council, Sarandon Dutree, to, to help with this presentation. The U.C. Council is helping us with some of these activities and she's going to share a little bit with you as well. But I just, I'm just going to quick share my screen and show you guys, I put together a simple little PowerPoint. I don't know if it's sharing, there we go. And just show you guys some of the things that we have planned. As, as you may know, I think everybody does know, we're celebrating our 75th year of incorporation. I believe the date is March 4th. So we had one of our employees in the Community Services Department come up with this logo that we can use. And to kick off the, the celebration, we're going to record and edit a video, much like we did for our Veterans Day program. And we'll release it on that date of incorporation, on the 4th of March, on YouTube and our website, as well as social media. And we're in the process of putting that together right now. Then we will have a paint class that we're holding at the community center on March 26th. And this is the painting that people that sign up for the class are going to paint. The scene of the river, as well as the trail that goes alongside the river. Another thing that we will be doing is what we're calling the Riverdale 75 Challenge. We're challenging people to complete 75 miles, one for each year, for our 75-year celebration. And they can choose to run, walk, or roll. They can choose a longer timeframe or a shorter timeframe, depending on how ambitious they feel. And all, everybody registered is going to get a Run, Walk, and Roll t-shirt that, that has that 75-year logo on it and everything. So it's kind of, they'll go out and run their own miles and they track it in an app and they report it back to us. So we're excited about that and we're taking registration currently for people to participate in that. The next thing that we're doing is we will be releasing historical and just fun facts about Riverdale weekly on social media. So here's an example of, of one of the facts that we might share. We'll have a template that we, that we use and we just insert the facts in there, trying to create more awareness in, in the city's history and get people excited about learning more about the place that they live. And we'll be doing that from that date of March 4th all the way through the 4th of July. We'll be releasing those facts on a weekly basis. And this is what I've invited Sarandon to help present. And so I'm going to turn the time over to her real quick.
So for our 75th anniversary, we are going to be doing a citywide challenge. So if you want to participate, you can do it with your family or a group of friends or whatever. You download the Catch Chase app. You can join as a guest or make an account. And pretty much daily, over a week, we will be setting up missions. And they can be questions or you can take pictures or videos of you doing certain things like, like they'll have a question that says, "What restaurant is at this address?" And then you have to find out, enter it, submit it, and we'll review it, give it points. Same goes with the pictures and the video missions, where we challenge you to do something and you may have to take a picture of you doing it or take a video of you doing it. And we will assess the, the submissions and give the correct amount of points. After all the points are tallied up, we will select the winner and give them a prize. So that's basically it.
Yeah, and the scavenger hunt is free for everybody to participate in. And I think that, Sarandon, did you, did you have one more ask out of the city council on that scavenger hunt?
So if you have any ideas of questions or missions you can ask to put on the app, then you should email Rich because we do need lots of ideas if we want to submit lots of missions for us to do because we're having a hard time figuring out exactly what there is to do.
So we're planning on starting the scavenger hunt on the 3rd of May and we'll go for nine, nine days or so. So we have a little bit of time, but we're putting together the framework right now. So, thanks, Sarandon. And then just the last thing I wanted to share with you guys is we are going to be, oh, I guess there's two more things. We're doing an art contest at the elementary schools and we're asking the kids to draw a picture of what they will look like or what Riverdale, Utah will look like in 75 years from now. And they'll turn in their entries and the seniors at the senior center will, will judge their entries and the winners will be, have their artwork displayed at the city buildings. And we will be passing out that information and starting that contest on the 4th of March as well. And then the last thing is we are going to take that 75-year logo and put it on some shirts or some hats, as well as the city flags that we have flying at the roundabouts. We'll replace them with the 75-year logo flags. All that stuff is currently in the works right now. So we will be getting those things out as they become available. But hopefully not, not too much longer in the next several weeks. We'll, we'll be trying to spread that logo around our, our city and incorporate it into our celebration. Does anybody have any questions or comments associated with this? I think that's all that I've prepared.
Rich, this is Brayden. On the flags, are, would those be available to purchase? I mean, how many of those are you going to get printed? Just curious.
Yeah, I'm working with Chris on trying to figure that question out. And once we, I don't know, Brayden. I think we probably could. We haven't made the order yet. I think we probably could make them available for purchase. But we don't want to overorder and just have a ton of, a ton of extra, so.
Sure, that, that's definitely a concern. I just know, I mean, we've got people in our neighborhood that'll fly a state flag, you know, around the 24th. And I've, I've actually had other people ask me about the, the city flag before.
We'll have to check into where we get price breaks as well, you know. So I, I think that there's definitely a possibility we could have a few extra on hand, for sure. And we'll communicate that information through the website.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Sarandon and Rich for that presentation. I appreciate all you're doing up there, both you have been, those you work with. I know this has been a difficult time this past year with COVID-19. Senior Center is, other than the takeout meals, is virtually, it's been closed really and activities have been limited for you. But you've always tried to think outside the box and have something for the residents to do. They could do online or with their families in some kind of an activity. So we appreciate you doing that, going the extra mile and, and it's been good. I know people are happy with, with what you do. And, and I know we, I know the city council and myself, we're very pleased with the work you put out. So keep up the good work. We're looking forward to a happy 75th. That video council, just so you're aware of it, we won't meet again probably before that. And we did put all of it in the newsletter pretty well this, for February. But the newsletter in March probably get out, usually comes out a couple of days after the 4th. So there probably won't be another newsletter out just before the 75th anniversary. But that video will be shown at 10:00 a.m. It will be on, it'll be on our city website. You can get it on our city Facebook site or you can go to YouTube, Riverdale City, Utah, and you can get that video anywhere there. It's, I think, what do you think, Rich? About 20, 25 minutes we talked. Should be fairly short, about like the Veterans Day program.
That's what we're shooting for, Mayor. Once we get everybody portion shot, we'll see where, how close we get to that goal.
Yeah, I think you'd be pretty close from what I saw today. So I, I think it's going to be, it's going to be pretty, I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be pretty special. So I, I won't say too much, I guess, right now. But from what I saw today, it's, there's some people put some work into this with some of the history of that. And it, it should be, should be interesting. I learned a couple of things today. I really did. I've seen a lot of it before, but there were a couple of things I picked up in that one, historical video that I thought was interesting. So it's a great thing you're doing and we appreciate your efforts and we look forward to the 75th. And I liked the ideas of the flags. I, what Brayden said, I think it'd be neat if we could maybe just, if you're for a short time, maybe make some of those flags and that available to the public. And I wouldn't order a bunch, I'd just take orders. You know, and you don't have to do that. Talk about it some more with Bill and others and kind of decide what to do. But that flag, it's, that's a sharp flag and that logo is really, really well done by one of our own. So it's pretty memorable and we'll fly that probably till the end of the year. I think that's what we decided and we probably keep it up, so.
And that's a really good, good point and good idea. I wasn't necessarily prepared to quite answer the question, but you're right, Mayor, we could take orders and really mitigate the risk of having a ton of flags sitting on the shelf if we just communicated that they needed to be in a certain time.
Yeah, I agree with you, so.
Thanks, guys.
All right, move on next to the consent items. Consideration approved the meeting minutes from January 26th, our city council work session. On January 26th, our 2021 city council regular session. In our work session, we talked about some additions that need to be made that weren't included in the February 2nd, 2021 strategic planning meeting. I think what we'll do, we'll just approve the January minutes tonight, if you feel okay with that. And we'll ask Shaly to bring the strategic planning meeting minutes with the additions back on our next meeting agenda. So Mr. Arnold and Mr. Mitchell can take a look and make sure and see what was included. So I think that's probably the way to do it and just probably, let's go with that, okay? So we'll do, we'll approve the January minutes tonight for the work session, the regular session, city council meeting. So do you have any further changes and corrections to any of the minutes that were presented tonight?
Mayor, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the January 26th work session and city council meeting minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Mitchell, a second from Counselor Ellis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Move on to consent item number two. Consideration of reappointment of Amy Ann Spires to the Planning Commission with the term to expire January 2015. Mr. Eggit, do you have any comments on this?
No, I, I, Mayor, she's, she's great. She works really hard. She's a good chairperson, taking the committee forward. She's caring and I appreciate her service to the community. So I, I support the recommendation as shown in your packet and your reappointment of her to that role.
Okay, does the council have any questions or comments?
That's 2025, correct?
Right. January 2025. Four-year terms, so. We have a motion on action item or consent item number two.
So moved.
Second, to approve.
Okay, you have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Consent item number three. Consideration of reappointment of Rick, Rickard Herman to the Planning Commission with term to expire January 2025. Mr. Eggit again.
Just with the mayor, I just want to note that I do appreciate his insight. He, he's willing to ask tough questions of applicants sometimes. It's helpful and he looks at the material and, again, works hard. I've appreciated getting to know him over the years as well and also do support your reappointment of him to the planning mission. I think he'll do a good job for another four years for the city and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions or comments on Rick? Okay, with that entertaining motion to reappointment. Reappoint Rick Herman?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Like to thank those two. I don't know if you're tuned in tonight. They were made aware that they might even be there in the council room. I don't know if they are, Shaly, but just want to thank them. Those of you that served on the Planning Commission know that this is pretty well a volunteer position. These people serve four-year terms and they're very faithful in the preview and take a good look at the future of the city and involved in decisions that the council may help guide them. So we appreciate their efforts and appreciate the willingness of Amy Ann and, and Rick to, to go for four years again. So we appreciate that very much. Move on next to the action items. Consideration to set a public hearing for March 16th, 2021 to discuss and consider a budget amendment for fiscal year 2021. Mr. Koby.
This is actually all in your packet there. I believe that, that explains everything. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Bill? Mr. Ellis?
Yes, it says that we're setting the public hearing for the 16th of March. That's today?
No, that's, today's February.
Oh, Feb, yeah, excuse me, sorry.
It's all right.
My bad.
Not a problem. You're looking at it anyways. Okay, have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion then on action item number one?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Mitchell, was it Mr. Hilton that seconded it?
Nope.
Mitchell seconded.
Alan.
I made motion.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Got the right people, well, part of the right people. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous in favor. Move on to action item number two. This is consideration of ordinance 930, proposed rezon request from agricultural A1, regional plan commercial CP3, and low impact transition overlay, LIT, zoning to single-family residential R-1-6, zoning for properties located approximately 1526, 1528, 1560, and 1580 West Ritter Drive. This request is by Riverdale Living LLC. Mr. Ega.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted in the work session, Riverdale Living LLC will be represented by Brittany and Josh Yates, who are the applicants representing that group. And their request for this rezon is to allow for the possibility of future development of single-family residential units on the property. The acreage is 5.67 acres. There's various zoning, as noted in your packet around this property, with close proximity to Freeway Park Drive and 1500 West. This request came before the planning commission on February 9th, 2021, where a public hearing was held in the matter to review the rezon request. All state hearing requirements for the public hearing have been met, and all the notice that was required to go out did go out in accordance with state code. Prior to the meeting, city staff did receive three telephone inquiries about the rezon request, two of which were noted resident, meaning they identified themselves as residents of the community, one of which did not, was inquiring about the potential, what the reason would mean for the properties and its use. I did not know who that was. And then there was one public comment shared during the meeting, as was indicated earlier during the public comment portion of this meeting and in the record as Ms. Hall. Following the public hearing, the planning commission discussed the request with the applicants, asked multiple questions. And at the conclusion of the discussion, there was a motion to approve the, or recommend approval of the submittal as found in the packet. There was unanimous approval of that motion to recommend the city council approval of that rezon request. Following discussion in tonight's matter, I didn't know this earlier, but obviously there's multiple options to approve, approve with, with any conditions table or deny. The only thing we, we request is that you make sure there's the appropriate findings of fact for whatever decision is made by the council. Ownership of the property is through Riverdale Living LLC and L.D. on Poulsen Trust, one half at all. You have a couple of rental homes on those properties and then vacant properties that otherwise are not being used for any specific purposes at this time. The general plan use for this area is set as residential low density, and the proposed rezon request and project concept requested use is in compliance with this land use designation and is supported in the area by the land use master plan element of the Riverdale general plan. In order to assist with the definition of what residential dash low density means, I've provided in your packet the two sheets from the Riverdale general plan that helped to define that. On the executive summary, you have ordinance number 930 that has been drafted by our city attorney. If there's any questions relative to that, please feel free to direct those to Mr. Brooks. Thereafter is the general plan pages I just noted. And then you'll find that there's a map indicating the area and what some of the requested uses would look like and what's around the properties being requested for rezon. Copy of the meeting minutes from the planning commission meeting on the night, and then the application from the applicant group with their explanation of their intent in answering articles A through D on the application, the required legal map and legal description of the rezon request for the application receipt showing the fee was paid, and then the checklist showing the public hearing notice rezon request items have been fulfilled for the purposes of the planning commission meeting on the night. So with that, and also with the items discussed during the work session, I defer back to city council mayor for any questions they may have about the applicant or me where appropriate. Thank you very much.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Mr. Ega or Mr. Yates?
I do.
Mayor, I have some.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Councilman Mitchell.
So first of all, I want to tell them thank you for, for coming up with something different. I think this is a much better fit. Obviously, it fits in with what the plan that we had for this area already was. And so, so I'm grateful for them for going back and re, kind of reconfiguring this. I did have one question. Ms. Hall, I think referred to the homes going in there. And she, maybe, did I hear her say that they could have 30 or 40 homes? Is that possible? Or how many homes would, would we be looking at going in there?
I did the numbers, Councilmember Mitchell, earlier on when there was some discussion about it. And then R1 six density, it's about 40 homes on 5.67 acres. That's about what you get.
With the road and everything through there?
Taking, taking out the road, you're about 40 homes. Yeah, taking out roads. You'd have one lot that's a detention basin lot as well. So it might be 41 lots with that detention basin, but it's around 40 is what the number yields.
Okay. I, I actually, I know that there's a desire for larger lots in Riverdale. There's longtime residents that want to build homes and stay in Riverdale as they've, they've grown out of their homes. And so I would encourage the Yates to possibly consider. I mean, even if it's zoned one, R1 six, I think they could still put some bigger lots. Is that right, Mike? If they wanted, I'd encourage them.
Yeah.
Maybe allow some of those lots to be a little bigger. I think you would get some real interest in that because I know there's people that have grown out of their, their starter homes in Riverdale or their families have expanded. They do not want to leave. So there is high demand, and I think you could probably get top dollar out of them. So I would just encourage them. Certainly, they wouldn't have to if we zoned R1 six, but I'd encourage them to consider that possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
I just have a couple of points. First of all, the Coleman property had 10 acres, and they tried to come in with an R1 six on that. And we turned that down because we said that that area was going to be in the R1 eight. And we didn't want to do the R1 six, that there's only one area in Riverdale that's R1 six, and that's down below by the, by the school, sort of, down below, me just down the street from the Motor View. And, and that's, that's why, so the request to go to R1 six was changed to an R1 eight. One, one thing I'm concerned with is there's no plans submitted. So we don't know, you know, when, when the Coleman property developed, they gave us a couple of plans. We were actually able to see what was going to come into that area, to that, that plan. Also, there's talk about putting an entrance exit on 1500 West, and that there's no way that'll be ever allowed. It's too close to the intersection on Ritter and 1500. The, there, this request plans on property that isn't part of this request. It's, it's got a couple of other pieces of property that isn't part of this request, but yet they're saying this is how it's going to go. The, the one thing I do like about any type of development there is the possibility of having some sort of development that's, doesn't allow too many entrance address, anything onto Ritter Drive. You know, I get worried if we go too big a lot that we're going to be looking at, you know, I don't even know, 20 driveways along there. And that'll be a, a huge problem. I mean, by far bigger problem than having smaller homes in that area. It's just, it's just bad news. I mean, you've, we've all talked about River Drive, you know, down by the Davis is on the bottom end, but up at the top, you know, you start getting people backing in and out of that. And we're running into problems like that with, on 1500, just with the driveways being so close to that intersection. People parking on the street, which is legal, just trying to make that curve. Lot of, lot of talk about that. I think 40, 40 lots is crazy. I mean, you're talking the same amount of lots in that subdivision that went into the Coleman Farms property, which is 10 acres. So double the space, same amount of lots. And the one thing is, is once we, once this is rezoned, we've lost complete control. People can say, this is how we're going to do it. This is our thoughts. This is how we're going to fund it. This is what it's going to look like. But, you know, that's, that's just property that's undeveloped. Once it's zoned into R1 six, anybody can, they can sell it to anybody. Anybody can buy it, develop it into what they see fit. And so I would hope that we would do kind of the same thing that was done with the Maverick development on Riverdale Road with the Gibby property, is if this passes to either R1 six or R1 eight, is to put a contingent upon a, a plan that's actually passed by the city council. So we can say, you know, no, we're not changing this to R1 six. You're putting, you know, every 60 feet, we have a driveway or something like that, because that can happen. And that, it'd just be a madhouse. So, you know, if, if we do pass this, have some sort of language in the ordinance that is contingent upon the, you know, site plan of some sort. And, and that's what we did with the Maverick development.
I think with the Maverick, Maverick was, it was contingent if Maverick went it, Maverick had to go ahead with it and do it. So the property taxes wouldn't re, recall the commercial there.
Right. But if, but if the plan didn't go forward with Maverick or whoever, then the zoning won't change. And I, I think that'd be a good safety contingent for us right here.
Mr. Brooks, can you weigh in on that?
Sorry, I have my iPad in my lap, and it's a touchscreen. My computer is now, they keep going, touch my screen. It doesn't work right. But, no, I, I mean, I tend to agree with Alan. The other option, everything he said is correct and true. So the other option is they would deny it for safety reasons or something like that. So if that's what keeps this thing going, they can build a contingency into that if, if, if need be. Because I mean, it is somewhat fair that they know, especially in that situation, because it's a little bit tricky right there. I mean, they could deny it on what they would perceive as, as safety grounds and traffic flow at this point. But I don't know that that's what they want to do. They just want to be assured that something, they come up with something that, that makes sure that, that flow works up there. So I, I think we could work something out.
Be contingent on the site plan being approved?
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Arnold? Any?
Just, just one comment. You know, I, I'm not, I know somebody talked with one of the neighbors there, and they were saying, you know, what would you like to see happen in this area? And they said, leave it alone exactly how it is. And, and I am not in that camp at all. You know, I, I don't own the property. I think people should be able to develop their property, you know, within the specs of the city of what has been said. But also, what, what happens is, is, you know, and we've seen this, the developers come in, they build, they sell, they leave. And then we're stuck with some of the things that have been coming in. And the Coleman property, you know, I haven't been a crazy fan of, you know, the, the developer that built the, the houses there because they just did stucco and things like that, where Braden was talking about, giving somebody the opportunity to do custom homes and things like that. That didn't happen. But, you know, I'm not trying to hold anybody back from developing. It's, it's their property, and I'd, I'd like to see it work. It's just that that's my neighborhood. And so when, you know, everybody's built and gone and, and all that kind of stuff, and the new buyers are there, you know, I want to be, you know, have happy neighbors and, and, you know, Ritter Drive is just going to be a bigger problem with any type of development there. So I just think if we do it right, it'd just be a great area. Not to mention, I was, I forgot about this, but, you know, in 2025, UDOT's going to be throwing some money that way and redoing that Riverdale Road exit off ramp thing. So Freeway Park Drive right there can be, there's a possibility of it being under a cement street. So just, just the thought of, you know, what's going in there with that type of thing after 2025.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Those are good ideas. Any other comments? Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, hi. Thank you. By way of full disclosure, the Barlow's are here. I guess they're representing the development. By way of full disclosure, Dr. Stuart Barlow, in his capacity as a physician and surgeon, did surgery on me about 18 years ago, and my wife about 22, 23 years ago. So I've, I've been aware of who they are. He is a Utah legislator from Fruit Heights, I believe. Yeah, also. And I give my condolences to the passing, untimely passing of your, your brother. And Ms. Ms. Barlow, is that your father? And Duncan was a good guy. When we moved back here to Utah in the early 90s, he was helping us, trying to locate here. And, and I worked for the Barlow's. And one of their businesses is about 40 years ago, part-time. Good family. I've known the family and so on. By, by way of full disclosure. Okay, that said, I, I think the Barlow's own of that 5.8 acres, probably the majority of it, they have, or maybe at least maybe half or somewhere in that area. But the, a lot of references have been made to the general plan. Does this fit the general plan? And I'm, I'm, I'm a little, you know, the general plan is, as I see it, is a guideline, and you can correct me on this. As a guideline, it's not set in stone. It, I mean, why would they need to bring this before the city council? If it, if it doesn't meet the general plan, then, you know, why bother? Well, it, it, I mean, there are some excess lots for sale, but it had to be discussed to see if it was in compliance with the general plan. And there's just, I, I think that's a, that's a crutch, that is, everything should be seen on the merit of it, of what it is. Now, personally, I would have liked to have seen townhomes go in here in R3. I can see the resistance. I, I would have liked to have seen this based more towards starter or younger families, if that's feasible. But I can see doing an R6, R1 six, understandable. And, and so if that works for you, okay, great. I support that. Now, that said, I think the discussion has dealt with things that are not necessarily pertinent to a rezon request. Some of the topics and concerns, they're legitimate concerns, but they're probably for, further down the road. And, but I, I'd like to see this go forward. If it works for the Yates and the Pousons and the Barlow's, hey, great. You know, I've, I've seen some of the, the things Duncan has done in the past. I've been aware of it, I should say. And they're, they're quality. And so, that said, I, I just, I'm happy that you're here and you're participating. And maybe we could beg Stuart, we can bend your ear on legislation, but that's another topic. But anyway, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Bart. Any other comments or suggestions, questions?
Yeah, I have one more. Mike, would, would an R1 six zoning, would the homes that would go in there, would they help with our affordable housing at all? Or probably not?
It depends on the price point. I think probably not with the way that, that median income is going into more townhomes and, and those type of format of homes. Probably less likely, honestly. Just housing is getting more and more expensive. There are a few affordable units with lower mortgage medians, maybe, but it's probably unlikely, honestly, Braden, at this point.
What, what kind of a price point, just, just off the top of your head, are you looking at for, for affordable housing right now? Do you know?
Well, it used to be like about 200 to 220, but it's probably now, with the way home rates are going up, probably closer to 240 or 250. And even that's hard to say without, it keeps doing. I don't know, Bill, if you would want to weigh in on any other thoughts there, but I, that's what I feel like it'd be about, Braden, right now.
So there's a, there's a pretty simple way to figure that. You look at the median income of a place, and then you multiply it by three, because generally speaking, generally speaking, just as a general rule of thumb, a third of a person's gross income should be dedicated to housing. And then the other two thirds are transportation and food and everything else. So if you, if the median income, and I forget what it is, but it's right around $60,000 in Weaver County, and if you were to multiply that by three, you would get $180,000. And if you can find a $180,000 decent home anywhere in Weaver County, I would like to shake your hand. It's, it's impossible. It's exceedingly difficult to find anywhere to live. And then, you know, the load of moderate income levels are even less than, are defined as, I think 80% and lower is, yeah, so, you know, whatever that calculation ends up being. You can see that that's why we're having a problem with housing in, in Weaver County and really in the whole state.
Braden? The, the R16 homes down below me that are kind of south of Good Foundations, there's four of them in there, the last one sold for right around, just, just under $400,000 about a year ago. And the houses in the Coleman development are anywhere from like 380 to 450.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that reference.
I, I would, I would bet, I mean, regardless of R18, R16, that's the, the price point that would be in that area.
Yeah.
Unless they went custom and then they, you could go up, you know, five, 600,000.
There are, there are a couple other R16s. I know there's probably more than that, but just for a gauge, the new Penunzio Farms, that's R16 and Mitchell Farms is R16 also. It's already completed, but those are both patio home projects. So that's, that's about the lot size that you're looking at, just for comparison, so.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Hilton.
I concur with Councilors Mitchell and Arnold. I too am an advocate for the property owners have the right to develop. I'm not an advocate of keeping that all farmland. I think we know something's going to go in there, residential. I agree is probably the best thing, but I, I, like Councilman Mitchell, also highly encourage the Barlow's, the Poulsen's and the Yates's to consider something that's more compatible with R18, a little less than pushing it for, for an R16 with 40 lots. I think you all know your neighbors probably better than most of the council and I think that, you know, we're pushing it to, to put in an R18, given the, the culture shock that has happened already over there. So if we approve this tonight, I highly encourage you to consider something that's a little bit fewer lots. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I had one other one, Mayor. I really like what Counselor Arnold said because that gives them the opportunity to, to lay the things out, let us look at it, see if there can really be a road from 1500 or whatever and, and get it, we get a real sense of what's actually going to happen over there before we just, you know, give it the go ahead and then just whatever happens, happens.
I like the idea.
Absolutely agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
Counselor Mitchell, I think we need to have a plan, know what's, where the road's going to go and how the lots are going to be formatted. So I totally agree with what they said. I think we need to have a plan before, as soon as we rezon it.
Do we have a motion then?
And one, one other thing, Mayor, you know, and that from the property that Riverdale City owns to 1500, there's probably about a, I mean, Mike might know better than me, but there's probably a 30-foot drop in that. I don't, I don't know how much it is, probably 150 feet, maybe. I mean, so it's, it's a, you know, even, even from the sidewalk to the first parcel there is probably 20 feet, especially on the backside, you know, to where the, the business condominium thingyers are. You know, it's, it's a big drop. So, I mean, it's not going to be, there, there's some, some issues there.
Be very, very difficult to build a road on 1500.
Right, right.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, Mr. Brooks? Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Is, for a zone request like this, to set these kinds of terms where you want to see how it's, how it's laid out, is that appropriate for a zone request?
Well, it's not something that's commonly done, but we, we did do it like Alan mentioned on that other one where we did put a contingency in there. I mean, I, the whole dilemma is we have a, it's the chicken and egg thing here. The developer needs some kind of an assurance that this could likely happen and yet the, the council wants some assurance that they'll be protected. And so by doing it in that sense, it, it kind of helps both parties, I think, feel satisfied in moving forward. Normally we would not, but your option in that case is just to deny it. And I don't know that that's what we want either. So, I mean, my thoughts would be you either approve it conditionally or table and wait until that comes in if, if the developer's agreeable to that. They may not be, and if they said, no, we want you to make a decision, then you got to make a decision. So, I mean.
Well, here's the thing is, is I don't know if the Yates or Barlow's, anybody spoke with the city about, you know, doing a developer's agreement in this, but to start, to come in at this point and say, and start setting these conditions, I, you know, I don't know. The Barlow's would like to have a, have a say in this.
I mean, that's up to the mayor if he wants to open it up for that.
Mr. Barlow, do you have any comments?
Dad, work? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you now.
Hey, thank you very much for your comments. I've, for us, we're really interested in, in providing a product that fits the area, that people are happy with and, and in essence actually may even improve some of these areas. So we're very interested in your input and would be happy to put those kind of to work and what we're planning on doing. It turns out that the R16 kind of fits a, a model that we think is a up and coming model that a lot of people are asking for their, for a new home in. And these are primarily people who just do not want to do a lot of yard work, I think, but it's a, it's a popular lot size. But we're open for your, your input. I'd like to just give a little time to Jen Barlow. She's looked into this a lot more than I have and see if she has any comments she'd like to make.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So we've, we've grappled with these things as well and wondering how much do we do in advance? You know, what, what do we need to have in our back pocket to, you know, keep this moving forward? And based on conversations that I've had with the Poulsen's and with the Yates's today, I think we would be willing to look at some kind of conditional approval so we can look into those things or even tabling it so we have some time to pull those together.
Thank you.
Is Josh Yates here?
Yes.
I don't see him.
I concur with both of, Josh Yates here, can you hear me?
Yes.
I concur with their comments. I think the preference would be, of those options would be a conditional approval so that we can have some confidence going into this plan. We, we have the same concerns. We want it to be a solid plan, so we're not trying to hide anything or do anything. We, we are more than happy to see this, the city happy with the plan that comes forward because we're going to be confident in it, in it as well. The layout of the lots, the way it flows with Ritter Drive, the, you know, how they sit on the interior, the, the building pad sizes, all those things are extremely important to us as well. And so, you know, we're confident in that. And so if that's what, if that's what gives the city that comfort level, we're more than happy to go in that direction.
Thank you, Josh.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I just want to make sure everybody's aware, especially the Yates and Barlow's. My biggest concern is the entrance onto Ritter Drive. So whether it be, you know, how close is it to the downhill slope as you go in around the, you know, tallest property house? Or how close it gets to 1500, if those other properties are involved in that? And, you know, as far as the layout of the, the property, you know, you put 40 homes in there versus 30 homes or something like that, you have roughly two cars per household, maybe two to four trips a day. You know, you're, you're putting on a few hundred cars onto Ritter. So the, the interior and how, you know, all of that, I think the biggest question is how it interfaces with Ritter Drive is, is my biggest concern. I, you know, the population and all that kind of stuff is fine. I mean, I'm not trying to hold the population down or anything like that, but it, you know, I've told everybody, Ritter Drive is just a tricky animal and how, how we interface with, with Ritter Drive. Because I, I think if we go R18, we might be looking at, like I said, with the, the drive, the driveways, which is a huge problem. But if we have a road that has, you know, an entrance, you know, toward the tallest end and another entrance or another, that's, you know, from 1500 somewhat, you got, I know, UDOT says it, I don't know if Riverdale has any documentation of how far an exit, you know, another intersection would be. So that just has to be considered and that's, that's my biggest issue. So that's why I would, I mean, I would make a motion to table this until such time as we get an appropriate plot layout that could be evaluated with the interface of Ritter Drive and, and see what exactly an R16 or an R18 would yield for the property owners.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second, but I, okay, I'll second.
You got a second from Counselor Stevens? Got a motion and a second. Ms.,
Can I make a comment?
Excuse me?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, excuse me, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, if I could. The, the request or the petition was for an R16. And so when, when it was mentioned possibly R16 versus R18, I think unless the petitioner changes it, it needs to be recognized as an R16 consistently.
I would disagree with that. The petition, even though it says R16, it's a petition to change the zoning and we can change it to R18. That's exactly what we did with the Coleman subdivision. The petition was for an R16 and we approved an R18.
Okay, do we have a, we have a second? You seconded Counselor Arnold's. Any other discussion under motion? Ms. Nay, will you poll the council then on the motion, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnold?
Aye.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, the agenda items been tabled, so. Just have to work with Mr. Eggit, probably come up with a proposed site plan and maybe take the recommendations and looks like, look carefully at how the road interfaces with Ritter Drive. That's probably a biggie, so. Any other comments on that?
Mayor, I have probably like a question and then a comment. I, I don't know how it works when we surplus the property, the Riverdale property, if they can, I know that there's been a Realtor that's been contacted by somebody, I don't know who, I mean, I know who the Realtor is, but I don't know who owns or who wants to buy the property. But, I mean, they could, if that plan's going to be the entire piece of property and is the Barlow piece with the red house, that's not a part of this right now, right? Mike, Mike, is that, we're, we're just talking the tallest house and the Poulsen property, right?
The, the Barlow is actually, the Barlow piece is part of the rezon request as well in the packet. So all of it is currently part of the request.
And then what about the property on the corner? Is that still the Baird's?
It is still the Baird's and obviously that's not part of the rezon, but yes, the Baird's still own that.
And they're not, they're not a party in this, they haven't joined this group yet?
You're correct, they have not. They've, they've been, my understanding, a little bit resistant to doing anything at this time.
Okay, move on next to discretionary items. Any discretionary for this meeting?
I have one. Have we, have we given any consideration to when we might be able to meet in person again or maybe find some way to do that? I, I, these, these meetings are so hard on these things and if, I mean, if we could even maybe have a goal where, where we just feel like we could meet again, if these certain criteria are met or something, I'd like to see us move towards that.
Okay. We'll have to look at it. I wondered about that myself with some events and things that are coming up. Maybe there was something, but I think as these vaccines get out to different age groups, that's going to help. I was thinking about our city council room today and all the seats are, there is any way you can put six, seven people up there and keep them at any kind of a social distance that they're asking right now? You'd have to meet, maybe spread the chairs out down where the visitors usually sit, maybe put the visitors up. Oh, you can't because they can't sit close together. I don't know, it's an awkward thing. Let us look at it, Counselor Mitchell, and kind of see, I haven't seen any other cities do it yet, kind of watching that too, but there's just a lot of different ideas out there with, well, you see in some states are saying, hey, we don't want to wear the mask anymore, so it's, it's just something we've got to evaluate and then health department, state guidelines, things like that. If you have ideas how we could do it, you know, we might could even have them like up in the community center, you know, we've got that big ball of purpose room, the big one, maybe we could, we could put our people six feet apart and operate that way. We could all be in the same room, have an area for visitors. Might be difficult, we don't have the cameras and things, that's probably the biggest thing for doing the live stream and those things, so that could be a problem. I don't know, Cody and Chris Stone might can tell us with, if that's possible, though, in there, Rich might even know, I don't know whether that's even an option. There may be, like I say, there may be better locations, temporary where we could do that, still meet together. Those are just off the top. If you have ideas, certainly, certainly bring them up.
If you'd like, Mayor, I can ask around other cities in the city manager group and see what other folks are doing and if they have a, a time certain when they're going to plan to try to meet together again. Because I, I agree, this is less than ideal.
Yeah, it isn't good, it really isn't, so. But we're open to suggestions and, yeah, we certainly try to move that direction as soon as we can. Any other discretionary?
I have one real quick thing. I had a, it's kind of along these same lines, but I had a resident approach me and, uh, about, uh, Shaili being there by herself. The resident think that was, was very safe. And I know Mike and Bill are right above that and can come sliding down the, the bat pole if they need to. But, um, they, they just said that they didn't think it was very cool to have her there by herself in case, you know, someone got excited or heated or whatever about some of these topics. So I'm just, just bringing that forward for Bill's.
That's good to know. I'm here too, but I, uh, I think, uh, when we first started this, Steve was there with her too. He was in the office just outside the door there, using that little office where the, uh, I think the, uh, court, court system uses that to talk with people and that.
I, I can be down there within a few seconds as well from my office through that back door.
Honestly, my money's on Shaili. If, if it came down to it, my money's on Shaili for sure.
Yeah, it, it doesn't take long to get down there, I know that, if there's any indication. I'm sure we would see that something was wrong really quick, so. Uh, we'll take a look at it. Bill can look into it, Chief. Maybe see if there's other options, but, uh, okay, any other discretionary? Uh, motion then to adjourn this meeting?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor. Thank you for being here.
We have a RDA meeting, Mayor.
Excuse me?
We have a RDA meeting.
Somebody asked me, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, we talked, didn't we mention that in the, uh, we mentioned it in the work session, the RDA meeting's been canceled?
Never mind. That's my fault. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Yeah, we did mention that.
Make sure it's in the minutes, in the minutes that it's been canceled.
You, you just don't want us to go.